Alrighty, it's seven o'clock. I'll call our November 20th meeting to order. Roll call, Joel.
I'm here.
Roger, is that here?
Yeah.
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Ethan?
Here.
Welcome back. Good to see you. Carly and Adam are missing. I'm here. Sarah, they need to join us.
Yes, thank you.
Alrighty, has our meeting been properly?
Yes, it has.
Okay. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and invisible with liberty and justice for all. Would you like to read the mission statement?
I will. Mount Orrib area school district in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing, and empowering productive, responsible, and self-fulfilling members of society.
Number two, agenda minutes approval. Two A, approval of our presented agenda. So. Motion by Leah, seconded by Joel. All those in favor of approving our agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? To be, approval of our November 6, 2023 board regular and executive meeting minutes.
So. Second.
Motion by Joel, seconded by Jim. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, number three. School news. Ethan, would you like to start?
Of course. I haven't been here for a while, so I'm not sure if you've heard about it, but I do have that our NHS, uh, chapter of the high school just completed their book drive. Uh, for them, that's on behalf of the Madison Reading Project. And I think the last count was around thirteen hundred books across the whole district. That's a really good number, so they're very proud of that. And I also have, uh, tomorrow, girls and boys basketball pep games. Girls are hosting Baraboo, and the boys are playing at River Valley High. That's about all, because of course, thanks for being here.
The musical is fantastic.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Yes?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, one piece that we want to let the public know is looking at something that our team, our library needs specialists, our school resource officer, um, Rose Meyer, are putting together digital citizenship and addressing bullying in our schools. It'll be in high school cafeteria at 6:00 PM on Wednesday. Let's say September, November 29th. So we welcome the public, uh, to come in and attend that event. Uh, we also know the girls swim team went to state. Um, they placed better than last year. I think they scored double the points that they did. So they're just growing their program since the second year. Um, and they had more events go to state than last year. So that was neat to see as well. And then in the spirit of what we're talking about NHS and our students becoming evolved, I know the, uh, freshman class, I think, started a food drive to help neighbors helping neighbors. Um, and they just loaded up the van today to take it to neighbors helping neighbors. Um, and that was a competition amongst the four grade levels. So neighbors helping neighbors was very happy to see what they were getting. Food, toiletries, diapers. There was really nice things for them to do.
Board members, any other school news? Nothing? Good. Any citizen comments? Doesn't look like it. Number four, personnel transactions. Ready for us to note? Not to approve?
Sorry.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Jim to approve our personnel tracks, transactions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, number five, consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to pull out to discuss? Motion to approve consent agenda? Motion by Leah, seconded by Joel to approve our consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Alrighty. Number six, our discussion items. Our committee member reports. Carly's out. Adam's out. I can't put it because my laptop is not here. We met on October 24th. And the main showcase of our meeting was Sarah. She discussed the education for employment plan that we've already discussed here. Uh, we also had a brief discussion about, uh, Mount Orrib childcare initiative that, um, they're trying to launch, um, or support more, uh, in-home daycares. And really, that was the bulk of our meeting was, you know, listening to the education for employment plan and how the chamber can help, um, maybe help build some more, uh, business partnerships to support the programs. I believe that a few next steps that I noted were Rachel and Jody were going to talk to develop a communication plan, sort of related activities with things that are already happening in terms of the childcare, the career day, the resume building, that kind of stuff. Um, and then another discussion item was, um, possibly presenting the pathways to the business community so that they have a better sense of what's going on and possibly, um, build up some more interest. Um, and lastly, the committee has been talking about, uh, for the past few months, sending out a survey to the business community about what their needs are in terms of, um, student workers and if they would be willing to host them as apprentices. Um, that kind of thing. Sarah, you were at that meeting, do you have anything to add?
No, each year, well, I guess yes, I should say. Each year, the education for employment plan goes to the full board in the summer. So this community coalition group, uh, specifically Rachel, telling me that will help inform our education for employment plan, fill in any gaps that were missing, looking at what we use to measure that tool, that, that plan. So we'll continue to evolve and then we'll continue to do it.
Awesome. Otherwise, it's on the half for that. Joel, do you have anything for the Village of Mount Orrib to remember for?
Uh, met on the first of November. Um, the, uh, this has been mine and, uh, I'm sorry, we were there. Um, one of the things that they said is any advocacy report, any reports they can get, anything they can get from the community is helpful. Uh, I took that to mean that that was for the schools as well. So, um, that was a big thing. Um, childcare piece that the village actually voted to support that, which was fantastic. Um, hopefully we can see some positive things there, which could help bring younger families into our community. And the last thing of note, I guess, is the milring conversation came up, and they did ask specifically what we had done. Um, and, uh, Ryan mentioned that, uh, the operation of our room obviously affected our milring. So, um, but it was just a, a, a point to notice.
Awesome. Any questions?
Joel, what was the overall toll of that discussion received?
Um, uh, a couple of the board members asked that as a pointed question, and the comment was made that their part is going down. Um, and it was noted that we are about the same, going up slightly. Um, and that was about it. So other than public positioning, I don't know that there was much else to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Sarah, I think you're up with your information and advocacy report.
Thank you. So this month, uh, looking at our school district data, whether it's state level or school district level, and looking at the percent or number of students who are growing, that the first part we talked about. And then the second part we'll talk about is the number who are achieving proficient or advanced. So again, growth and proficiency are important factors, um, when, when measuring how we're doing as a system. The first piece that I presented to the board is looking at our growth in math. And I presented two years here, and this is from our Fastbridge data. So that's a district assessment that's provided to students fall, winter, and spring. And you can see the key at the bottom of those two figures, uh, pinkish color and purplish colors, and what those colors represent on these bar graphs. Uh, we have two different school years, so as you can see, it's not just a one-year measure. I actually look at multiple years, but for this report, I just wanted to put two on. And this is again, growth. How many students are growing? Have flat growth, modest growth, typical growth, or aggressive growth? The key things for me when I look at this data and look at our systems work is we've been putting a lot of time and energy, especially in terms of math, elementary programming. We launched bridges in mathematics three years ago, overall in our system, and been putting our resources, such as our instructional coaches and our math reference into that now that we have, as well as, um, working with CISA 2 to have coaching done with Stephen Mialvik, with our, our teachers. We're really proud of the growth that we've been seeing in the third, fourth, and fifth grade, especially some of that aggressive growth. Uh, third grade really stands out. They're a very tight team that, that have been working closely and really just trying to, um, push the students, especially coming out of kindergarten first and second grade, through those COVID years. They're, they're really seeing, um, that more aggressive growth and the work that they're doing. The typical and aggressive growth, that darker purple and lighter purple, uh, throughout the time then, when we think about vertical alignment, and here, I guess, it's going horizontally from third, fourth, all the way to eighth grade. Um, but we are looking at the growth at the middle school levels as well. We can see, you know, less purple, like the bar graphs aren't as high as we move forward there. And we also want to translate the data, or at least look at other data sources to say, is this just happening at Fastbridge, or do we see in other assessments as well? So I'll draw our attention to the state report card. The state report card, this is just a, a graphic I pulled. Um, this is growth, and in these images, figure four and figure three, uh, looking at growth, um, for English and math, but the yellow arrows really look at that math piece. The figure three to the left, that's the elementary piece on the forward exam, which is the state assessment. The darker blue bar is our school, and the, I guess, grayish bar is then comparing our students to students that are across the state at the elementary level. We can see the yellow arrow on the left, where seventy-seven point four out of a hundred scale in, in this aspect, um, are exceeding or higher than the sixty-six percent of the state level. But if we look to the figure on the right, which is figure four, for growth for middle school, we can see that yellow arrow again, and our students aren't growing at the same rate in math this past school year, um, when compared to the state peers. So that's a piece that we're looking at. We're starting conversations with the middle school teachers as to what, what's happening. Um, we are actually under a curriculum review cycle, so our first year in that cycle. So we are looking at that data piece with them. Principal Paul Christensen, the middle school principal, has met with each grade level team and has started to talk through proficiency data, growth data, asking questions of the team, uh, and we're gonna start looking at other resources, because we want to make sure our resources are aligned at for sure K eight. And what we're seeing with, with bridges and the growth there, we want to look for programs that will then continue that growth and continue that push proficiency up into the middle school levels. So we'll stop there for any questions or wonders. I know we have some math lines at the table. You good for now? Okay, great. Okay, so that's the growth piece there, um, in math. So similar structure for reading, again, looking at growth. We have fall to spring, two school years. With this piece here, uh, we don't see, we see growth, uh, good growth. Uh, it's not looking as, as much growth as we had at the math. But we are, we have not really seen the fruits of changing and moving towards changing our curriculum yet. Um, as, as I shared with the board, uh, we're, now we're investing time and energy into flipping our literacy program at the elementary level. Teachers have had letters training or going through letters training this year. Uh, we have changes at the kindergarten level and some changes at grades one through three. But next year, we will be implementing a new literacy program. It'll take a couple of years to get into that and see those changes. So I look forward to looking at data like this and looking at student growth and how we can continue to move students forward in that. And then we also have similar figures as we did for math, for reading, again, for growth, or for... I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I get ahead of myself, so I'll pause for the growth. Sorry about that. Maybe a little achievement will jump.
I was just saying, it stays pretty consistent, so for the, uh, 2021, 2022, grade three, this is a bad example because there's significant growth in the 2021, 2022. But you see what I mean?
Yep.
Grade five and then their grade six up top. Grade six, grade seven up top.
Corbett, Corbett eyes looking at.
Yeah, Corbett, yes.
Yep.
So it stays fairly consistent, but I'm just pointing that out.
Yep.
But yeah, excellent growth in grade three.
Yeah, anytime, um, it's earlier in the, in the first page that it mentions, when, when we see fifty percent or more students, meaning typical or above typical growth, our system is working. So we are seeing that, uh, we know we can do better. But growth is one component. When we talk about achievement, which we'll talk about next, we also have kids achieving pretty high. So growing sometimes is harder, but doesn't mean it can't happen because we did see that at the elementary level math. Uh, but we'll see, um, some, some more data in, one second here. Okay, so achievement, right? Percentage students who are proficient or advanced in a specific area. So again, looking at the state report card, uh, very similar figures as the growth, but this is now achievement. How are students proficient and advanced on the state assessment? I don't have the arrows here, I probably should have got some arrows here this time. But the figure to the left again is the elementary, and the figure to the right is the middle school. When we look, so our school, whether it's the elementary or middle school, Mount Orrib is the dark blue bars, and the state again is, is the gray bar. Just to highlight some pieces, going back to elementary math, eighteen, nineteen points higher than the state level. So again, our kids are growing and they are achieving an elementary math piece. Means, I think, our, our system is doing what it's supposed to be doing with, with our new resources and how teachers are using those resources. Elementary, I'm sorry, middle school math. We didn't see the growth that we wanted to see, but kids still are achieving above where their state peers are. Again, I, I know we can look at what we're doing and improve upon that. And that's where our team is at right now. Literacy wise, English language arts wise, again, we're above the state for that achievement piece, both at the elementary and the middle school level.
So on the, the math side of things?
Sure.
Curriculum at the middle school is, that's part of the, is it a seven-year musical?
Six to seven, yeah.
Six to seven years, so we're in the first year.
We're up, correct, yeah.
Kind of the next thing?
Yep.
Okay. In the curriculum that you did for math, is there similar curriculum for middle school, or do you end up looking at something totally different?
Good question. Bridges in Mathematics is a K five program.
Okay.
So there isn't, there isn't necessarily from that company a complement. Uh, there are approaches that are, um, problem-solving based versus maybe more traditional math, maybe how I learned it, maybe how you learned it. So there are approaches like that. There's factors, whether, whether that can work in our current middle school model or not. Some of those programs require an hour. Just because you have so much collaboration group for those kinds of things, that takes time to do well. Uh, we currently have a forty-five minute-ish middle school block of time. So that's just one factor. There's all these pieces as we look at programs that are out there, what would work for Mount Orrib middle school, and what would complement what we're doing at the elementary.
And assuming the process that you'll follow will be similar to what was followed with the adoption of?
Correct, yeah.
You have two to three-year study implementation process before we see?
One to two year.
One to two year?
Yeah, yeah, we're in year one. Um, looking at the data, we're gonna start to look at resources probably in, in winter-ish. Um, would love to go and visit some schools, but yeah, very similar process there.
Spot of a math question. Sorry.
Please.
Uh, something you said sparked that. So I can't remember exactly when we switched every, from everyday math.
Yeah, it, it was, um, supposed to be during COVID. So our kindergarten team went forward with it, uh, when we, in 2021 school year, and our grades one through five did a portion of that adoption. And then in 21, 22, no, was that wrong? Yeah, 21, 22 is when we fully, of course, we're in our third year now, yeah.
Okay, and are we seeing more growth than we did with everyday math? You know, like, since we've switched?
Yeah, good question. Um, our district measurement was just, it must start about that time when we're switching. So I don't have apples to apples there. Uh, I could go look back, the state report, I could look back at some other pieces and give you that if you're curious.
It's more curiosity, because having had three kids go through everyday math and now one going through not everyday math. And, um, like, he came home and he's in second grade and he's doing multiplication, and the other kid's like, "You're not supposed to be doing that yet." And he's like, "Uh, I know all of this multiplication." And so I was just curious, like, because, yeah, it's like leaps and bounds. I feel like ahead of where everyday math was.
I'm happy to hear that.
Yeah.
The anecdotal, that's, that's good.
Yeah, it was, uh...
I hate, I would hate to hear the opposite, so thank you for...
It was, it was mind-boggling. He was just like throwing out, and not, so they were trying to trick him and they couldn't. Like, I mean, Grant didn't have a multiplying less than tens, but...
Yeah, but the concept is there.
The concept, yeah.
It is conceptual to understand the math.
Third grade plus when they, before they started doing it, so, yeah. It's just, there's more curiosity.
Yeah. I can look back to see if I can get that?
If it's, if it's hard, don't do it, but if, if it's something like, it's just more curiosity for him because, I don't, I just have children to see it through, and I'm just more curious if it's, I'm like... Overall, or just my guess?
Yeah, no, I agree. I wish, uh, for at least one of my kiddos, for sure, I mean, he would have had, um, bridges. That's just the way his mind works, conceptual a little bit more, and he just...
Yeah, same.
Understand the math, so...
Other questions? Do you think that there is, um, this is a little outside the topic?
Sure.
But if we needed more time for math, is there any talk ever that the middle school might switch to a schedule similar to the high school? Or is that too challenging and?
And, and just not developmentally appropriate?
Yeah, um, I...
But just when you said like, oh, the time constraint is...
Sure, sure, staff might be interested, might be interesting. That schedule for middle schoolers has never been brought up. There's so much developmentally happening for middle schoolers in general, coming from elementary to a middle school model. We have talked at various times about times and schedules and blocks, but there hasn't been, um, any serious discussion or traction. But that's why we have curriculum review cycles, and we talk about what's on the table, what is doable, what can we, what we can control, what we could make people forward to changing. So it could be part of the conversation. Do you want to highlight, um, again, just that, just looking at the data in multiple ways? Um, so this is more looking at the percentage of students who are proficient and advanced in math. This is grades three, four, and five, put together in this paragraph over three years. So we can see, um, that growth, both the proficiency and students who, that, that advanced piece. So, you know, when we talk about growth in math at the elementary level, this is what that is. We see more students who are, um, being identified as advanced. It's doubled over that two, three-year span. Uh, so we hope just that keeps, that keeps happening.
And the same fifty percent applies to this data as was stated earlier? Yeah, as long as we have fifty percent, or is that just...
So this, good question. So that was for, if you have fifty percent or more of your students meeting or exceeding the role. This is achievement.
This is achievement.
Yep, yep. Good question, because those two can be, um, interchanged accidentally.
So what kind of numbers are they looking for there that would assume that a hundred percent?
You would assume correctly.
Okay.
Yeah. Three years ago, potentially, around three years ago, during the summer data retreat called the Student Success Summit now, uh, we, we said we wanted to get to seventy percent. That was our school district goal. Uh, but it's, I'm gonna skip ahead, but we can compare ourselves, though. I know we like to compare ourselves, we don't like to compare ourselves to others. But it is interesting to see how we do compare to, um, the school districts. So every year, I update this spreadsheet that you have access to as a board, um, looking at how we compare to our five up and five downs that were decided many years ago. More regional, uh, people who, who border us more. And then our Badger Conference, I have to update our Badger Conference now because we've had some, some adjustments, but anyway, I messed the longitudinal piece. But those school districts who are performing highly, meaning have higher percentage of students proficient or advanced, are agreed. So overall, uh, we're doing well. We're figuring out what's happening. A, a big question, we talked about the middle school math pieces, what, what's happening at eighth grade? We have teachers who are amazing teachers. Because I think it's a resource issue. Some standards or some skills aren't being taught at that grade level, or they're not taught enough prior to the forward test that we have in eighth grade. So that's, that's a piece that we're looking at. The grade team is on board, um, looking at what's out there, trying to figure out what's happening there.
Sarah, so how does, how does that translate into high school? You know, for, I know this is all K three, right?
Sure.
That we talked about, but, you know, going at eighth grade right there, they, they know the path.
Yep.
What, what are the statistics in high school?
Are you, are you psyching me to ACT? Was that planned?
Yes.
Okay. Are we moving along? Okay, we are moving along, okay. So we think about ACT, uh, thanks, Joe. They go on the ACT piece. So you can see over time in this, this is just the state and Mount Orrib kiddos. And this ACT that I'm providing is the graduating class. So it's not the junior ACT that all of our students take. It's, maybe a student has taken it, which my kiddo might think two or three times, and it's their top ACT score is plugged into this as the graduating class. The yellow line signifies when, um, it became a state assessment. That means all kids are now taking the ACT. Therefore, if we have more students taking the ACT, all diverse students, we see a drop in the overall scores after that yellow line there. But, uh, to answer sort of Jim's question, we look at math overall, or just in general, if it goes in math question generally, if we can generally, we're looking at, uh, we can see, um, the state and how Mount Orrib is, um, moving there. Uh, we do see drops over time at the state and Mount Orrib level, especially once colleges said you don't necessarily have to submit your ACT in order to get in. I heard of many students, maybe some students that you have in your household, um, maybe, or their peers, having, putting less effort towards that assessment that they know is not necessarily needed for, for moving up to post-secondary. I think the pendulum, I've heard, is sort of swinging back a little bit with the ACT in some schools, maybe they're considering accepting ACT scores or looking at ACT scores more for college admissions. So, so we'll see what happens there. We also know, uh, with COVID piece also may play a part a little bit in it as well, with scores dropping across the state. But again, we have that comparison, the ACT graduate comparison, and I think that'll, we can look at that piece of it as well. I don't have the twenty-three comparison yet, so I apologize, that's not public yet. But we can see the math piece. So overall, over, over three years, we can see here, uh, with the Badger Conference, uh, we're just behind one key. So it is interesting looking at the eighth grade, middle school piece, and then looking at junior, senior year when students are taking the ACT. Another aha, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to figure out. But we have the data to ask those questions, and that's what the team is doing right now. Other than that, um, like I mentioned, we're, we're well underway with our revisions to math and our implementation there. Um, up next then is, is the literacy piece at the elementary level, and we're looking at the math and literacy piece, or English language arts at the secondary level. So larger chunks of our curriculum, we're really looking at these next couple of years. That's all, yeah?
Awesome, thank you. Any other questions for Sarah or Kevin? Yep. Alrighty, number seven, our action items. Seven A, consideration of the twenty-four, twenty-five 4K contracts.
Yeah, thank you. So we're delighted to bring our 4K contracts to the board again. We've had such a great partnership with our, our four sites. And we look forward to our enrollment and registration process starting after winter break, going into January. So part of our annual process is bringing our 4K contracts to the board for board... approval. They went to the education committee last, last meeting, I think. Last meeting. And members agreed to bring contracts with no changes from last year besides we had an increased dollar amount of the thirty-two-hundred per pupil stipend or amounts reimbursement. They went to thirty-four-hundred last year, the board approved that. So that was the change to the contract. This round, we have two versions. We have our general version that applies to Agape, Hearts and Hands, Academy of Little Vikings. And then we have our CCS, Children's Community School version. The only difference in these two contracts is there's, there's one portion that talks about the number of students that were allowed in the classroom space. And the CCS contract has one more student, a lot, a lot, I shouldn't say, but one more student in the contract. They looked at twenty-one because they have a Montessori model of seven, seven, seven age-wise in the classrooms and we want to honor that Montessori structure. So I'm looking for a motion for potential approval. And then, so.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Jim, to approve the two four K service agreements. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed.
Very good, thank you.
Seven B, considered distribution of a community, thank you.
Aubrey. We have Aubrey Hanks here, who's gonna share, share examples with us.
I've got them too.
So Aubrey, do you want to give a little context and the why behind us?
Deal. Yeah, so this is a thank you postcard for the community in response to their support of the operational referendum, which has allowed us so many things, including attracting and retaining our incredible staff, ensuring that the space that we provide our students is welcoming and safe, facility maintenance, and the list goes on. And so we just want to acknowledge the community's efforts to ensure that we have the possibility to do all of this and then that we value their relationship in terms of the district and the community itself. And so I'm hoping to send this out in early December. I know that that's quick for a round, but it is the season of gratitude and we are bringing their resources, the community's resources to use currently, so it's very timely. I'm looking for a vote of approval. And if there's anything that you'd like to change in terms of the verbiage used here or even the, the design, let me know. I have a comment and thank you so much for giving me these.
Well, there's just looks pretty similar.
Yes, yeah.
There's just.
Full call.
Pardon.
It was for a building, right?
It's true, yeah. Level of gratitude still goes a long way. I have my thoughts.
Do we, do we want to specifically call up the district's operational referendum or just support of the district?
Good question.
I like that it says the district's operational referendum because in our small community, well, in most small communities, it's really big deal. You know, and it's a lot of money. You know, I think that being a little more specific like that is a little more impactful. That's just what I think.
I agree. I think that's on the topics, that's on everybody's minds currently, but I'm open to other thoughts.
I don't have a thought on just that. There's not anything going on.
No, I appreciate it.
I like it, Aubrey, very well done. I think Aubrey, okay with the timing of everything. You know, we're, we didn't have the resources last year. It's been a year since we passed it and I'm just thinking people are conveniently getting those tax notes right now. So I like it. I just question the timing.
What would you say is a better time?
I don't.
Yeah, that's fair. I know. We don't have any sort of either.
July thirty-first.
Second installment. Honestly, you know, last year when we didn't have the resources, but can't go back to that, so.
My only thought, I mean, now is, is fine if that's what you think. Because there wasn't a time suggestion in our, again, I was pondering. And my only thought was like early January, like after the holiday, like I don't know about you all, like we get very warm out, all the buzzer electronic. The past two weeks, our mailbox has been stuffed with catalogs that we don't even order from. You know, so like maybe if it was early January, and this again could be no, but like that it would be, I don't know. Maybe then it would stand out a little bit. Also, I think if it went out early December before, how many cards? I could go either way. That was just my only thought.
I agree. There's some noise right now, but it might stand out.
Yeah.
So my only question.
Yeah.
Are we sure that everyone whose picture is on here, that there's no one that has said you cannot use my image?
They are all from social media that I have either taken or Dr. Sularna has taken and that I am insured that at least all the photos that I've taken have been approved and I heard that Dr. Sularna should just, so I can verify them.
That, that was my only, I'm like, oh, somebody's gonna be like, my kid's on there. I checked the box, it says you can't use their.
They all look sort of familiar, so I thought.
Maybe they all might be from social media.
Yeah.
But that would be, that would, otherwise I think it's very.
Thank you.
I think timing wise, it doesn't really matter when we send it because someone might get mad and.
You're gonna see it anyways. I mean, here, to go back to your point, Jessica, I mean, yes, it may be more noise in January, but your tax bill's through January first.
Right, yeah. I mean, why not send it now?
We send it on December and then we're going to be accused of sending Christmas cards.
I mean, so if we, it's just.
So Aubrey, what is the quickest turnaround? I mean, for you, what is the timeline on that?
Timeline, I was hoping to get it out by December fifth, possibly.
So within the next ten days, you can turn this out?
Yeah, I should be able to. I have to verify with the, the print shop, but it should be feasible based on all of my experiences previously.
I guess I would lean towards sooner rather than later. I mean, yes, we.
I agree.
But you're excited to get it out.
Yeah.
I, that's my thought.
Do you have a latest like, has to be by this date because when they're sending the postal service, we can let them know the date we'd like it. And they, they put it through bulk mail whenever it's completed within that time.
I, I know, I like the gratitude closer to Thanksgiving, but obviously that's upon us. So I would say sooner than later, but I do not.
Thank you, Jim.
I have zero proof self to give to me. It's a fair demand, it off right away.
Well, I make a motion to, to approve this, well done, thank you, Gar, and send it out as soon as possible.
Second, motion by Jim, seconded by Leah to approve the distribution of the community thank card. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Wait, I have one more question. This goes to everybody in our voting, not just Mount Horeh, right?
Yes.
Okay. That was, I wrote it down over that desk. Because I knew I forgot. Okay, thank you. Or if we only are sending to Mount Horeh, we will never hear that.
Yes.
Somebody will put it on their fridge. And then they don't know.
All right. Number eight, citizen comments. All right, future agenda items, if there's anything you all would like to discuss, please let me or Dr. Snare know.
Can we remind everyone, there's only one meeting in December?
Yep.
And there's a joint SAW in education in December, the first Monday, there's no SAW in December.
Correct. And our one board of education meeting, Dr. Snare has noted in our, the update, timer could come like six fifty because we are gonna have the student, I think they require some, so that we have a chance to like meet them and talk with them and have a snack with them. So. Number eleven, closed session. I'm gonna suggest that we do not have this since we're missing three people and just move that conversation to our next meeting. Do you agree?
Our next, next meeting would be December fourth.
Right. So. You think. Oh, you can have it real quick, but I mean, we're still gonna need their, so, okay, we can still have it real quick. All right, number eleven, closed session. Counterpoint, closed session per section nineteen point eighty-five one C, considering employment promotion compensation of performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility to with superintendent's evaluation. So, motion by Leah, seconded by Jim, roll call, Joel?
Yes.
Leah? Yes. Jim?
Yes.
And also a yes. I say that we need two minutes as soon as everybody clears the room. Thank you both.